Good evening. The school board meeting for August 23rd, 2016 is now in session. Pam, roll call please.
Mrs. Belford?
Present.
Mr. Craig?
Present.
Mrs. Neese?
Here.
Mrs. Henderson?
Here.
And Mr. Ziegler?
Here.
Please join me in a moment of silence for two members of our BPS family who have recently passed away. Peggy McGuire, an ESE teacher at Ocean Breeze Elementary, and Kurt Bengston, an HVAC mechanic Thank you. Their family, friends, and colleagues are in our thoughts during this difficult time. Michelle Irwin, Director of Community Relations, will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we move further, I'd like to offer my fellow board members the opportunity to recognize staff, students, community members, anything they'd like to comment about. Mrs. Belford, go ahead.
Just a really a quick shout out to the entire BPS team because from all accounts, it seemed like it was a very smooth opening to school. Things seem to have gone very well, and at least all of the students that I'm hearing from seem to be having a great start to the year as well. Teachers seem energized and excited, and principals seem energized and excited, and I'm looking forward to a great year. But I know there was a lot of work that went on behind the scenes to make all that happen. So, many thanks to all those who did all that work.
Good point. Anybody else?
Ditto what she said, and a shout out to the facilities people who have put our air conditioners back online when we've had issues. Students, parents, and teachers alike all appreciate that.
Anybody else? No? I have one. I've been visiting schools, as I'm sure all you have been, and if you all recall, I've many times been concerned about giving directions at events to flag etiquette for saluting the flag when the honor guard comes in, et cetera, et cetera. Well, today while I was visiting a classroom, I noticed on the wall, and I'm, for just unique, I guess, to this classroom, the teacher had the Pledge of Allegiance, the words on the wall. And I said, "Is that on your own accord? Why'd you put that on there?" And he said, "Well, I realize that while most all the kids say the Pledge of Allegiance, many of them are actually mumbling. They really don't know the words." And it occurred to me, "Well, I guess that's just as important as a flag etiquette itself is educating them on those words." So, you know, shout out to the teacher. It happens to be Mr. Addo, a social studies teacher at Bayside High, but I like seeing that on the classroom wall. That was unique. I've never seen it in another class. Maybe all classrooms should have the Pledge of Allegiance on the wall. Just saying. Okay. Hmm? No, that'd be very, not fancy from some vendor I know, like the alphabet for the handwriting charts. Yeah, I had that same scare too when I made that thought. But nevertheless, it was great to see that patriotism is alive and well in our schools. That brings us to the adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Ziegler and members of the board, on this evening's agenda, we have administrative staff recommendations, one recognition, one proclamation, thirteen consent items, and three action items. You also have the yellow supplemental agenda, which are changes made to the agenda since being released to the public. There are revisions to item F-14 on instructional staff recommendations, item G-22 on revisions to policy 6480 expenditures, and item G-24 on department-school-related agreements.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve?
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Belford, second by Mrs. Henderson. Any discussion? Not hearing any, please vote.
Mine's not working either.
Oh. Oh, joy. Well, let's have a voice vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passes five zero. Dr. Blackburn, let's move on to the administrative staff recommendations.
Before we go further, I would like to take this opportunity to recognize...
We need a vote on them?
Like I said, under item A-5, you have two administrative staff recommendations to consider.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve?
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Belford, second by Mrs. Henderson. Any discussion? Not seeing any, I'm going to assume we need a voice vote, so all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed?
Try it.
Try it? It's okay, we'll try it. It loads a five oh, we'll try it. Five oh, hey, it worked. You our new technical guru over here?
Yes, John.
Okay, Dr. Blackburn.
Before we go further, I'd like to take this opportunity to recognize the administrative staff members present this evening. First, I would like to recognize Ms. Sandy Cruz on her upcoming retirement from the position of Director of Management Information Systems.
I just want to say I've had a wonderful career at the district. I want to thank my boss for his leadership in the last five years. I especially want to thank all of those that worked for me and with me in order to really provide what we needed to provide for the students. And I want to say that that's probably the best thing about my career, is I can end it feeling like I made a difference for something that really matters, the students of our district. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandy, for all that you've done for us. Congratulations to Russell Cheatham on his reclassification from the position of Area Supervisor of Applications to the position of Director of Management Information Systems.
Thank you, Dr. Blackburn. Members of the board, thank you for this opportunity. Tonight, joining me is my wife and my two sons, Maxwell and Micah. Also, my father's here tonight. Guess I should keep the mic by my mouth. And I just want to thank them for the support. I wouldn't be where I am today without that support. Also want to take, thank Gina Buto for the opportunity. I'd like to thank Sandy Cruz for the leadership. And finally, oh, I cannot forget, I'd like to thank my mother. She's not here tonight, but I know she's watching on TV, so thank you. Hi, Mom. And finally, I just, similar to what Sandy said, I'd like to thank the ET staff. It's just a great group of professionals, programmers, systems analysts, you know, you don't see those people a lot, but they're just as committed as everyone else to making sure that our students are educated and to the highest of excellence. Again, thank you for the opportunity.
All right, Dr. Blackburn, we're ready to begin the recognition portion of this evening's meeting.
Item B-6 is to recognize the recipients of the Principal Achievement Award for Outstanding Leadership and the Outstanding Assistant Principal Achievement Award. Dr. Carol Kent, Deputy Superintendent and Chief Human Resources Officer, will make the presentation. Dr. Kent?
Thank you. Good evening. The Principal Achievement Award for Outstanding Leadership and the Outstanding Assistant Principal Achievement Award were established in 1988 to recognize exemplary principals and assistant principals for their contributions to their schools and communities. The programs honor principals and assistant principals that have spearheaded initiatives to increase student performance, promote safe learning environments, and establish partnerships with parents and community members. This year's nominees were nominated by their peers and selected through a process involving community stakeholders and district leadership. At this time, I would like to ask Rashad Wilson, Principal of Endeavor Elementary School, and Mira Trine, previous assistant principal at Jackson Middle School and newly appointed principal at Tropical Elementary, along with school board chairman Andy Ziegler, Superintendent Blackburn, and Dr. Rich Dunkel, Principal of Fair Glenn Elementary School and President of Brevard Association of School Administrators, Gary Schiffern, Executive Director of Brevard Association of School Administrators, and our business partners from Community Credit Union, Deborah Blair, Meredith Gibson, and David Brock, who will join us in recognizing these outstanding administrators tonight. Please come to the front. I have a little more to say. Going to embarrass them just a little bit more. Rashad, will you raise your hand? Rashad Wilson has been an educator with Brevard Public Schools for 14 years. He is beginning his sixth year as school principal at Endeavor Elementary School, serving the community of Cocoa. Before assuming a principal role, he served as assistant principal at Cocoa High School for four years, and prior to that was a teacher at Merritt Island High School and Endeavor Elementary. In 1999, he received his bachelor's degree in sports administration from the University of South Carolina, later obtaining his master's degree in educational leadership from Nova Southeastern University in 2005. Mr. Wilson is the model instructional leader, creating an environment where student achievement results are consistently monitored and used to drive instruction. Mr. Wilson's goal is for every student to reach his or her potential, and celebration of student learning is evident throughout the campus. Congratulations, Mr. Wilson, for Brevard Public Schools 2016 Principal of the Year. Receiving Brevard's 2016 Outstanding Assistant Principal Achievement Award is Mira Trine. Mira has been an educator with Brevard Public Schools for 12 years, serving in the capacity of third grade and gifted teacher, the assistant principal at Jackson Middle School, and most recently promoted to principal at Tropical Elementary. Ms. Trine earned her bachelor's degree in elementary education from the University of Central Florida in 2004, and master's degree in educational leadership from the University of Central Florida in 2009. Ms. Trine has done an outstanding job supporting all BPS students. She has been instrumental in creating a master schedule that is supportive of inclusive practices for all our students. She has also developed a comprehensive early warning system that helped the staff at Jackson Middle School provide interventions for struggling students and monitor their progress. She has developed training for the teachers on prioritizing standards and developing scales that will enable their teachers and students to better monitor student progress toward acquisition of the Florida standards. She is dedicated, hardworking, and innovative. Congratulations, Ms. Trine, Brevard Public Schools 2016 Assistant Principal of the Year.
And thank you, Community Credit Union, for sponsoring that. Congratulations to our winners. All right. Dr. Blackburn, please tell us about our proclamation.
Item C-7 is to adopt a resolution proclaiming the month of September as proud to be an American month.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve?
Second.
Oh, wait a minute, we need to, we need to do a resolution. I don't see the resolution here. Who's reading the resolution? Usually queued up.
Whereas September affords several opportunities to commemorate the ideals upon which our nation was founded, such as Constitutional Day on September 16th, and Celebrate Freedom Week September 26th through September 30th, and whereas September 2000, oh, I'm sorry, September 11, 2016 is the 15th anniversary of the unprecedented terrorist attacks against the United States resulting in a momentous loss of life and property, and whereas the American spirit and character have prevailed in the face of adversity with courage and conviction, we honor our patriots whose dedication to the establishment of American ideals are reflected in the Declaration of Independence and Constitution, and whereas we remember these patriots with activities and programs that strengthen the appreciation of and dedication to the values of patriotism, trustworthiness, respect, responsibility, fairness, caring, and good citizenship that constitute the pillars of the American character. Therefore, be it resolved that the school board of Brevard County hereby declares September 2016 proud to be an American month this 23rd day of August 2016.
Okay. Now, what are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve?
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Belford, second by Mr. Craig, sorry. Any discussion? Not hearing any, please vote. No? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Passes five zero. And we have no presentations. We are now the public comments section of the meeting. Maximum allowed time for each speaker is three minutes. Clarification of information presented, and answers to questions specific to district business and educational matters will be posted on the school board's website under a section called "For the Record." Please be reminded that profane, abusive, or slanderous speech is not allowed. I request that you speak into the microphone and state your name. We have three speakers tonight. We're going to start with Gina, Gina Eizer, if I spelt that correctly, followed by Anthony Calucci, and then Dan Bennett.
Come on up. Hi, I'm Gina Eizer. This is Mallory, my daughter. She's a first grader at Surfside Elementary. I want to thank Tina Deskovich for alerting me to this meeting tonight about an hour ago, so, and also I want to thank Lori Masterson and the office staff at Surfside for being so committed to our students. Sometimes what looks good on paper doesn't really work out in the real world, so I thought I'd come down here and just share with you what we face as a family sending a medically needy child to school. When I walked into school, on the first day of school, there was no nurse. Mallory was diagnosed with type 1 diabetes when she was 15 months old, so it was alarming. And I carry in about over $600 worth of supplies and tools that we need to keep her healthy through the day. The office staff is very busy, well-intentioned, but if they get distracted, it's my little girl who faces the consequence of that, and everyone's available to human error. Mallory gets checked anywhere from three to four times a day. Anything can affect your blood sugar. It's not just food. It could be illness. It could be exercise. It could be excitement about learning and school, who knows? She carries, in the nurse's office, it's called an emergency shot. In the event that Mallory were to become unconscious or have a seizure, someone would need to get to her quickly. It could be life-threatening. This is not like an EpiPen. It's not as user-friendly. I've actually never had to administer it because we haven't had an emergency. I stay on top of Mallory's diabetes pretty well. What's filled in this syringe is diluted water, so the person who gives the shot needs to know that you take the shot, you insert it into this vial, push the water through, and then you need to turn this vial until the liquid becomes clear, so they actually get their medication properly. And it's slightly cloudy. It might not get clear because it's expired, so. And then you're going to draw up back into the syringe the medication to the line that she needs in order to survive. Then, you're going to place the shot in the muscle, either in the arm or in the thigh. You have to get it all the way in and push it through, and you also need to make sure that the student is lying on their side, because when they get this medication, it can make them vomit. What we're requesting an office staff member to possibly do should really be like a last-case scenario. It shouldn't be the go-to person to administer something like that. I love her with all my heart, and that shot scares me. I also want you to keep in mind that it's not just type 1 diabetic students, it could be any student facing a life-changing diagnosis while they're in the school year, and parents would need to have a professional there to partner with so that their child can learn.
Thank you. Your time is up, but if you'd like to go to the back and speak to Beth Thede, she can make sure that we have whatever services are needed...
Okay.
...to make sure that she's safe at all times.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Calucci, step on up.
Hello, my name is Anthony Calucci, and I'm the Vice President of the Brevard Federation of Teachers. As most of you know, Finland is often put on a pedestal when it comes to education. Many here in the U.S. contemplate how our system could obtain the same results that they do, and it's been said, "We can't fire our way to Finland." So, how do we improve our system? We do so through quality professional development that focuses on teacher leadership. I think those of us who have been around Brevard County for a while would agree that there was a time when professional development here was phenomenal. I believe that the quality professional development I received early in my career led me to become an accomplished teacher. We used to love professional development in Brevard. We'd pick up this big old book, and we'd look through hundreds of choices and pick the one that we thought would best meet our needs, which consequently would meet our students' needs. When choice and teacher leadership were removed from professional development, so did the joy of learning and often the benefits of professional development for our students. We have an opportunity to get professional development right in this district with ESA. I have some recommendations I'm going to give you from the National Board for Professional Teaching Standards, which, by the way, National Board Certification is an incredible professional development opportunity that in past years caught on in Brevard like a Florida wildfire. They recommend that districts involve board-certified teachers in the process of developing local plans for Title II from the beginning. Furthermore, they state there are 16 ways to spend Title II funds. One such way is to promote the National Board Certification Program by defraying cost and compensating mentors. That would be a huge bang for the buck. As research has repeatedly shown, National Board teachers are more effective than their non-certified peers. Another way to spend the funds is by promoting teacher leadership by offering training, support, and compensation to teachers who assume leadership roles. That's a way to increase our capacity while providing teachers with a financial incentive that will hopefully keep them in the classroom. I know all of you seem genuine about respecting teachers and promoting teacher leadership. This is really where the rubber meets the road, so I'm requesting that you reach out to me, an elected representative of our teachers, and let's start putting a plan in place with the help of classroom teachers for Title II under ESA, and I'm going to come up there and hand this to you, if that's okay.
Yes. Thank you. Give it to Pam at the end. Mr. Bennett, you're next. And if I recall correctly, you wanted the podium moved a little closer?
Can I speak at this?
No, sir. Turn this around. Just kidding.
Mr. Ziegler, it's a minor improvement. I'm just going to move it back a little bit, but it's a, my concern is not a fear out of speaking to you guys, but I see a parent came up and spoke to you all, and I just don't want people intimidated from coming up here, but I see we're about even with that one, so it's, it is an improvement. Good evening, everyone, members of the board, and Dr. Blackburn. It's that time of year. Principals have spent the summer reflecting on the year before. That's good, that's what they should be doing, and thinking about, "What would I change for this year?" Right? So, we had our pre-planning, and principals rolled out, here's what's new. And then they announced what's new at their faculty meetings. And what happens when that, well, then we get the calls into the office, can they do that? And then we have, some schools have new principals, you know, a rookie principal, because the other one retired, they came in and they said, "Okay, here's what's changing." Or maybe they didn't even know it was new, but here's what we're doing, because we did it the last place. And the calls come into the office with loads of, "Can this happen?" Now, not every school calls. Not just about every school has something new going on, but not every school calls, or we don't get calls from every school, and that's because different principals have a different bedside manner of rolling out new things and getting input and getting buy-in from their teachers. And especially whenever there's a rookie principal, you know, trying to, you know, put their fingerprint on the school, and here's the direction we're going in, some will have a better way of explaining, "Here's why we're going to do it this way," and some will just kind of, "Well, I'm the new boss, and that's how you're going to do it." And so, we get those calls. So, here's what I urge, and it is almost an annual speech that I give. I'd urge you to reach out to the principals that are doing something new, and do that self-reflection. They must be capable of it, because they're rolling out new things. Do that self-reflection and ask, "Did I explain this well? Do I have the buy-in of my staff?" But more important, take some time, a period of time into the school year, and think about how that new system will be evaluated. Think about how they'll get feedback. If they set up the duty schedule all different, you know, "We're all new, different duty stations this year, and everyone's all shuffled all around," and they just kind of handed it out, said, "Find your name, go stand there," how will they know if that was a good idea? If they said, "Hey, we're testing every kid this year. You know, we used to just target certain kids for testing, but now we're testing every kid, and we're collecting data on every kid?" Well, do my teachers think this is just work, just to do work? Why are we testing the top kids in the school? Or are they going to get that feedback and find out? If it's new requirements of meetings, hey, it used to be, I'd go to a meeting, we'd have a meeting, we'd leave. Now, I go to a meeting, I fill out a report, because the principal wants to see a report. Where's the report come from? Well, I copy my plan book, and I hand it to, are principals willing and ready to ask for that feedback for the new things they've rolled out for this year? Because I'll tell you, I get the feedback in the office, and then I talk to the people in the back row, and I say, "What's going on?" All right? I challenge you to challenge your principals to somehow get that feedback, so they have buy-in from everyone in what they're doing. Thank you.
Thank you. The board wishes to thank this evening's speakers. Your willingness to speak to the board is appreciated. That moves us to the consent agenda. Dr. Blackburn?
There are 13 agenda items under this ca-
There are 13 agenda items under this category, two with prior information.
Does any board member wish to pull any items? In that case, I'll entertain a motion to accept the consent items.
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Belford, second by Mrs. Henderson. Any discussion?
I have a quick discussion. Dr. Blackburn, the item, there's a few grants. One of them is the grants for the vegetables and food services.
You're the vegetable?
I am. I would just like to keep track, if you could keep track for the board, the different grants that are going to the different schools so that we can have a list of where all the grant money is going, just so that in six months, we can say we've had X amount of grants, and here's where they went. They come in at such odd times that it's really hard to keep track, but if we start keeping track, then we'll know what we have.
Okay.
You're right. We did use to do that, and I don't know what happened to that. But it needs to be reinstated.
All right. Not hearing any other discussion. Let's vote. There we go, five zero. It's technology.
Mine logged out, too. Every time, I'm having to log back in for every vote.
Oh, really? Okay. All right. I'm assuming that we don't need a break, so we will move on to the action agenda, Dr. Blackburn.
There are three items for your consideration. First is item G22, which is to authorize the superintendent to advertise for a public hearing to approve the proposed revisions to Policy 6480 expenditures.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Henderson, second by Mrs. Belford. Any discussion? Passes five zero to set a public hearing. Dr. Blackburn.
Next is item G23, which is purchasing solicitations.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Second.
Mrs. Belford and Mrs. Henderson again. Any discussion? Okay, let's vote. Five zero. Imagine that. Dr. Blackburn.
Next is item G24, which is department-school initiated agreements.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Thank you for joining us.
Second.
All right. Yes, Mrs. Henderson seconded. No, moved by Mrs. Neese, second by Mrs. Henderson. Any discussion? All in favor? Well, let's vote online. Five zero. That's the end of action agenda. No information, no staff... Wow, we're flying to board reports and discussion points. In addition to any discussion points, I request board members, please include any information requests to be placed on board-assigned tasks during this time as well. Does anybody have any discussion points that we don't have on the agenda, anything they'd like to discuss? Go ahead, Mrs. Neese.
Are you going to share during your report kind of where we're at with six-day count, where we're at? I know you and I talked about that.
I am.
Mr. Craig?
The only thing I will add is that as we look out to the east, we have our first big storms that are forming. And so I will challenge everyone at the cabinet level to make sure that you got to realize this is my job in the Navy as EM, so I have to make sure we're all on the same page. We got the brief last week about the shelter stuff, but what we do individually in preparation as storms move forward and how that timeline continues to compress, knowing what our duties are, extremely important, obviously. So please, Dr. Blackburn, if you could reemphasize that and then, you know, reemphasize it amongst our leaders in the schools as well so that we're all on the same page, I'd appreciate that.
Mrs. Belford?
So what do you think about Election Day? It ought to get here and screw everything up?
Timing is about right.
Does that work for you, Mrs. Henderson, about Election Day? It's going to push everything back by a lot of weeks?
I think it's like the mailman, rain or shine or sleet or hurricane, it's going on.
Sorry.
Mrs. Belford?
Just a quick request. I know we have been having some communication regarding upcoming board workshops and potential topics that we would like to include. Mr. Calucci spoke tonight about, I think, and Mr. Craig mentioned as well, I think those are the perfect types of things that we can sit down and workshop with BFT and including teacher leaders to kind of discuss as we're going into this unknown territory of ESSA, how can we really work together to make sure that we're leveraging the opportunities that are coming our way, looking at the positives and maximizing those. So I know Pam, I think, was keeping a list of items we would like to come forward for those workshops. If you could please add that, Pam.
And while you're talking about workshops, I just wanted to solidify, I had sent an email out with a suggestion, and I got no feedback from the board members, so I just want to make sure that everybody's okay with the suggestion for times of workshops at 2:00 and moving expulsions back to 11:00. That makes the day more contiguous. I was trying to figure out how to do workshops without adjusting any of our schedule, but then it occurred to me, well, expulsion should be able to move. And since we hardly ever have expulsions, that just leaves us the afternoons, and I think works out real well. So...
I kind of liked your question of why do we always have them at 2:00? It's, you know, it's because that's the way we've always done them.
Legend, folklore, history.
Yeah, and I kind of liked, you know, the idea of we always pull everyone out at the end of the day, and that's probably the worst time that we pull administrators out of their buildings is the end of the day, or maybe the middle of the day. And I don't know, I'm looking back at the back of the room, probably pulling them out middle of the day is, I don't know, I'm looking back at the back of the room, maybe we ought to check with them to pull their principals. Is there a better time of the day than others to pull them out for those? I don't know why we pulled them at 2:00, but I guess I would maybe like some feedback, too, before we make that change. I like the 11:00 time, but we always had them at 2:00 because of folklore, history, they were at 2:00.
Well, first, make sure it's okay with the board, which it appears to be, and then if there's any, I don't think there's any legal reason.
There's no magic about the time, as far as legal.
So unless there's a logical reason, it's an inconvenience for staff.
Just a thought, and perhaps we can seek feedback from our leading and learning team to kind of seek input from our school-based leadership, but bringing up, why do we do it that way? Why do we even have to do it on the same day? Because if we did it the evening before the board meeting after school hours, then we wouldn't be pulling principals out of the schools. Parents may not have to take off work to come to the expulsion hearing. I don't know.
You'd be paying a lot of overtime.
As infrequently as it happens, I think that the convenience to staff and families outweighs the minimal expense personally. So I think that's a logical thing to look at, is the evening before. Dr. Blackburn, can you have somebody think through that and see if that would work? If there's any reason it wouldn't work, then let us know. But as a minimum, we'll move to 11:00 unless that looks like a better option.
Well, I guess from a vegetarian standpoint, I would like to look at that, but at least people could come on their lunch hours if we did it at 11:00.
That's true, too. So...
And how many times have we had expulsions, and we have six people here from the district, and nobody shows up?
Nobody shows up.
And we're paying overtime for nothing. I mean, we're paying overtime for them being here. That's not what I mean, but we didn't get to take care of an issue.
Right.
Go ahead.
All things considered, then, all these comments considered, if it pleases the board, I do think that the shift to 11:00 would accommodate everything that we need to accommodate.
Okay.
We're getting funny looks from the back of the room. Would you just verify that that is not...
They just think we look funny. That's...
Because of lunch duty, it may be a problem with lunch duty.
Well, that's, well, it's not set in stone, so if staff has concerns or recommendations, speak with the superintendent about it. While we're talking about...
Maybe a problem with lunch supervision, maybe that's the issue. I don't know.
Well, we'll figure that out. While we're talking about expulsions, I would like to reiterate a point that we brought up a long time ago. There have been students expelled that I was surprised didn't come up to a hearing. And I know that in the past, there used to be a practice of, well, I don't know if it was a practice, but I would hear through the grapevine of students and parents being discouraged from ever appealing. And I've even heard stories that if you appeal and you lose, it could be worse, which is absolutely not true. And I just want to make sure that families are aware of the opportunity to appeal and that they're not discouraged to appeal if they feel that their child was, for some reason, unduly accused of something. You know, there's some of those times where sometimes the victim of a situation gets expelled because of the way they reacted to a situation. And I know in some of those, I don't exactly think that was necessarily fair, but unless it comes to us, it's out of our hands. So I just want to make sure that no family or child is discouraged from that option of coming before us.
Well, I think it's...
Go ahead.
I think it's part of the discipline process you're going to be discussing over the next year that is not well-articulated and maybe will be better articulated through this year as you address it. It's not well-articulated on the website, and I think that it goes back to communication is our number-one issue in this community.
All right. So, okay. Anybody else have anything they'd like to add? No? Dr. Blackburn, what would you like to add?
For...
Yes, sir. Anything you'd like to talk about?
Well, as Mrs. Belford mentioned, there was a very, very smooth opening to the school year, so kudos out to everyone through the entire district, parents included, because, you know, they had to give us our children or their children back on August 10th, so I know that was a challenge for many. But in addition to the beginning of the school year, you know, there was this whole reorganization that took place. So I want to send some kudos out to people that were involved in that. The reorganization project involved the consolidation or closing of the north, central, and south area offices and the migration of staff and all of their belongings to several locations, Riverview, Palm Bay High School, and ESF, and several schools. A total of 94, close to 100 people were impacted, and all of these offices were transitioned and up and running for July 1, the beginning of the fiscal year. And so, you know, this required multiple data drops, pod modifications, the moving of workstations, furniture cabinets, et cetera, cleaning and repairs, and so it was a huge, huge effort. And back on August 17th, we had a reorganization appreciation luncheon for all of those people right here in this room. Many of our maintenance, plant, operation workers that, in addition to their normal duties, helped to make all of that happen on a shoestring budget, so kudos to all of them for that. Special recognition in that effort to Ms. Cynthia Ryan, the project manager, who led all of the logistics while fully meeting her job responsibilities as well. She led the communication and collaboration between plant operations, maintenance, and warehouse, and all of the departments that were involved. Leading and learning, as you know, that there was a transition there where we eliminated or closed the curriculum division, closed area offices, and so that's going quite well as well. There are three elementary directors, three secondary directors, and three coordinators that have divided the schools by level, and they're still taking care of the other curricular programs and responsibilities. That's going very well. Some specifics there are 56 elementary schools are broken up into 10 very small groups. They started meeting monthly to discuss problems of practice, you know, the priorities we have at every level. There is early literacy in the elementary school, middle grades, algebra, access, and achievement, and then high school graduation rate and college readiness. So that's going very well. There are also times, in addition to the small group meetings, where four times during the year where all principals will meet, and so that's happening as well. There was, I know I had a question about ACT scores. They're in, but embargoed. We can't discuss until hopefully the 24th, so that's tomorrow. And so as soon as the embargo is released, we'll be able to give the board and the community an update on ACT scores. Just kudos to leading and learning and to all of the principals and other staff members involved in that effort. Some HR updates. The Viera Site Clinic is on track to open up in November 2016, and benefit open enrollment is scheduled for October 10 through the 21st of this year. Some enrollment updates. So we're running the six-day counts, and I'll give you some highlights here. Total district six-day counts, including our charter schools, McKay Scholarship, and home education students. We are realizing right now we're about 1,122 students below projections. As of the six-day count, there are 51.5 elementary and 23.2 secondary teaching allocations that have been strategically unfilled. So my point there is, as we haven't hit projections yet, we also have not hired to our capacity. And so HR, finances, operations, leading and learning, they're on top of that information daily to make sure we don't overextend ourselves financially. That's being managed. We have a, we have sort of a hiring freeze going on right now to make sure, again, we don't overexert ourselves. Prior to this year, there were 60 teacher binders given out, contracts before the year started. All 60 of those people have been interviewed and selected, and that's, you know, the position pieces there. Let's see here. I mentioned our six-day count. I had two. I mean, all of my school visits are phenomenal, but I want to send kudos out to the leadership and the staff at Meadow Lane Intermediate and Central Middle School. And I'll tell you why. This year, we, in the strategic plan, we wanted a rejuvenated effort on fulfilling social and emotional needs for students. I will tell you, both of those campuses were ahead of system efforts back in the spring. One school, Central Middle School, bought into a time-to-teach program that really worked on proactively filling social-emotional needs, team building, et cetera, et cetera, and a way to prevent disciplinary issues from happening on campuses. Over at Meadow Lane Intermediate, I wrote this down because I thought it was kind of phenomenal. They have a caring school community initiative where every student is involved in a 15-minute session at the beginning of every day where they're going over social-emotional graces, right? Looking each other eyeball to eyeball, saying thank you, holding open doors for people that come through, them adults or women or what have you, and just two really, really good efforts at dealing with social-emotional issues of our students. And that's my update. Oh, and like I said at the last board meeting, had one of the pleasures of my life by being the guest speaker at the Space Coast Gator Club, where we sent off a couple hundred kids from Brevard that are going off to the University of Florida. So had a great time with the Space Coast Gator Club.
Very good. Excellent. Anybody have anything else to add? Any questions? Well, in that case, I guess, meeting is adjourned. 6:19. 6:19.